All right.
Thank you everybody for coming. We do have some new faces, so I will start with myself. Please go around and introduce yourselves. I'm Lynn, I'm the Assistant Superintendent.
I'm Olivia, I'm the Clerk of Board.
I'm Dee, I'm a parent.
Nate, I'm a parent.
Doug, parent.
Greg, parent.
Ramona, trustee, Hamilton, parent. I'm a parent, but.
I'm a parent as well, and actually have kids in the district.
Michelle, trustee.
We do have cookies, so please feel free to help yourself. Crave Rot snacks, so. We are currently, you all have a copy of our month at a glance. We are currently working on the draft policy to accompany the Heritage Health MOU. So there are three examples of various language, and we're looking at what we're merging and not merging, so that's kind of where we stopped last time. Anything else you want me to add?
No.
We're just kind of skimming for it, trying to make it more precise. I'm curious. We're calling it local mental health providers. Do we need it to say local?
No.
It could be out of the area. I was questioning that, because, I mean, if we are, then I think we need to define what local means to us.
I mean, obviously, I think it's like understood that obviously you're gonna have a local mental health provider.
Like, I didn't have a pin.
Are we gonna engage mental health providers that don't have a contractor MOU with us?
No.
So should we have something in there that references that contracted? I don't know.
Yeah, maybe in your definitions or something, or... Oh, I see, so number two, we have a, maybe down there it says local mental health.
Right.
Maybe in that area we can.
Say contracted?
Yeah. Yeah, there's there you go.
Or those providers that have contracted or have an MOU with Lakeland School District.
Do you all use MOUs as a contract? Okay. I know everybody's different.
So if we add a mental health providers, the definition of what it is, or what they are, who provide mental health services and support to LJSD under contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we're gonna figure out a way not to include that.
What's that?
I said I knew she was gonna figure out a way to do that without having to say that.
Yeah.
So we have identified several district expectations. The district shall provide training and education to its staff on recognizing signs of mental health concerns.
Is that program already in place?
Yeah.
The district shall provide procedures for its staff in regard to student mental health concerns. The district shall maintain the confidentiality of student mental health records in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. The district may collaborate. Come on in and grab a seat.
Hi, thank you.
There's chairs up at the table if you.
And there's cookies if you'd like a cookie. There's a.
Next time we'll ring. If we have a coming third place healthy, I'll go fruitless.
Yeah, oatmeal raisin, lunchbox, and M and M's.
It's two hours, I'll probably have one here.
Put your order in now and I'll take care of it for next minute.
That's so nice of you.
And I don't know about this.
And we have all introduced ourselves. Can I get your name?
Yeah, I'm Joseph from Brooklyn.
Okay. What was that?
I was just saying that the format if you wanted to change it or whatever, or just leave it.
Oh, it hasn't been formatted. I decided not to be obsessive over that.
Yeah, yeah, somebody, I mean, somebody else can take care of the font and all that. But I meant like under the headers or headings, or, I mean, looks fine to me, but.
Okay. Yeah, we were just kind of putting.
Going through.
Yeah.
That word local came up, you know, I heard right before Joseph walked in.
Yeah, I think we need to. I can't remember how we do it here.
Oh, yeah.
Where's the search tool?
Control F.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Is there a search?
What do they sell here?
Uh, go look under edit. Oh, yeah, replace right there, you got it.
Okay. Oh, replace. Yeah, I don't want it to mess with anything, so. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you.
I hate to go back, but on the definitions R2, we list a lot of different social worker or licensed professional, I don't know what the word is, professions. Does that include all of them that we would see? And would it be, should we just state something simple like licensed, what's used in the MOU was licensed mental health care professionals states, provider will provide licensed mental health care professionals? Which then that seems to be all encompassing. We had a discussion about that.
We did have a discussion, yeah. And this policy isn't specific just to heritage health.
Correct.
It's specific to what we would consider a mental health provider.
I agree, so that's why I was thinking, open it up to licensed professional.
Well, you can have licensed professional counselors, and you can have licensed clinical professional couns- licensed clinical professional counselors, and they're two different. They can operate under two different scopes, such as licensed master social workers as well as licensed clinical social workers. A master or a bachelor social worker cannot do anything in the mental health field. Psychologist, psychiatrist.
What about school? Does the district have a school psych?
We do have a school psychologist. Well, when we do. I know we're, do we have a school psychologist, right? Or is that one of our hard to fill positions?
It's one of our hard to fill, we do have school psychs though, but.
But, yeah, because sometimes it's on the hard to fill position.
But we only have two people who are legally qualified to leave the district today and open shop tomorrow, so to speak.
Right, because I did.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
Our school psychs are not.
Oh, they're not licensed to do?
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's my understanding. They're more through the lens of special education and.
Really?
Testing and.
So is this list then comprehensive of what the district will only allow in to speak to?
You'd probably have to have them all licensed.
So licensed psychologists and licensed psychiatrists, okay.
To provide mental health services, right?
What about licensed mental health care professionals?
Um, I don't know, I would go back to, does this.
If you look it up, Idaho's.
I was gonna say, I would look up Idaho statute, because I've been looking at going and getting my licensure and counseling. There's too many hoops to jump there.
Well, and I don't know that you can, and I could be mistaken, but I don't know that you can just be a licensed counselor. Do you have to have the professional component which has to do with education?
Well, I do have that.
No, I'm not talking about you.
Oh, you're talking in general.
In general, that, I mean, anyone could probably hold themselves out as a counselor.
Yes.
But to get the licensure component, you have to go down the professional path, and then to get the clinical component, you have to go down a whole nother path, so there's, there's varying ways.
With the school psychologist, I don't know how many of them are, they have their certification for school, but.
They don't have a mental health license.
They just don't know.
Right.
Because we don't have them work in that capacity.
That's really confusing, to be honest.
Which part?
The state.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I don't know the words. No, not you, the state. I think it's fine to call it out, just so parents are clear.
Right, and initially it was just licensed professional counselor, licensed social worker, but because there are, there's varying components for mental health providers.
So have we captured all of them, and we haven't left any out?
To my knowledge.
What is an LMFT?
That's a licensed.
Marriage family therapist. And I don't know that we would want that in here.
I don't think so, we don't have any.
Well, I mean, I don't know if that's applicable to.
Students, no.
Right, it'd be.
The family part of that?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Did you find anything?
Yeah, I'm just looking, it's all pretty much the same thing. I'm looking as if there's anything outside of what we were talking about there.
Okay.
I think the other thing we wanted to talk to a few, don't wanna make it so broad that anybody can come throw a cert on the table and say.
Correct.
You know, and have access to.
The kiddos.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my thing, whatever.
All right, so the district shall.
Do you know we have different options?
I do.
Okay.
I'm trying not to focus and do all that and waste everyone's time.
Just get the data done, yeah?
Yeah. The district shall provide training and education to its staff on recognizing signs of mental health concerns. The district shall provide procedures for its staff in regard to student mental health concerns. The district shall maintain the confidentiality of student mental health records in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. The district shall provide information to parents and guardians about mental health resources available in the community. The district shall evaluate the effectiveness of its collaboration with mental health providers every six months and make adjustments as needed. The district.
I'm sorry, how is that done and who will do that? What's the criteria so it's not subjective, what's metrics?
Which one is that? Well, we don't wanna get too far into that, because we're supposed to be governments. A lot of this is already in the admin handbook, so we're not really like the A B C D. We're just a generalized governance, and then it's up to the district to fulfill, that's actually Reese's role. Which one was that you were reading?
F.
The district shall evaluate the effectiveness of its collaborations with mental health providers every six months and make adjustments as needed.
Yeah, and I think that's in that MOU, wasn't it, a six-month checking thing? I don't have a copy of it. Was that what it was?
I thought it was a year, but, so.
And we actually, our, one of our lead counselor meets monthly, because Heritage Health's just checking in, and then we meet with our monthly, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how we're gonna evaluate a mental health care provider when it's on contract between the mental health care provider and the parents.
Well, it's not, though, it's with the district.
No, no, the actual, the actual, they're contracting with the, with the student, right?
No, they contract with the district. The district holds the MOU.
Yes.
And the district is providing the space to.
That's all we're doing, right, is providing space?
Right, right, yeah.
So how are we gonna evaluate? I mean, is the criteria gonna be they show it up on time?
Well, here's the thing, well, I don't know, the district has our own criteria already, and we do provide more. That's been the narrative, is that we're only providing space, but that's not true. If you look at the MOU and you actually look at what's been happening, we also provide identification through our SROs and our counselors on who needs counseling.
Yes.
We provide, you know, all kinds of information to people to get counseling, so we're doing more.
Yeah, we provide this list, right, that has all the.
No, we do more than that. We.
Well, I agree, we do do more than that, and then we also, we also provide, I think we have to provide name and contact information, right, of the child and the parents to Heritage Health in this case, or the providers, so that they can do the internal process.
Right, right, right.
Parents and children.
Well, we already do it. The district already does it through the counselors, so the counselors already may have a relationship and say, hey, we think this would be a benefit kind of thing, so. It's, in some instances, it almost washes over each other. So I think what we're trying to say here is we need, like you're saying, you know, somebody needs to make sure that, which they already do, they're meeting monthly every six months. I think here, Amy probably can define it better and say, hey, maybe the board want, oh, the board has quarterly behind that. So somebody needs to make sure that if a parent or a student has a complaint, that they can file it with the district.
I think I've hung up on the word effectiveness. So effectiveness in my mind, if a counselor is providing treatment to a patient, is it effective? So, and I don't know how we would evaluate that.
It's the effectiveness of the collaboration.
Right, so is the space adequate?
Okay.
It's specific to the logistics.
Yeah, that kind of thing. And I think we wanna know that, you know, that we're providing it in.
So it's a joint effort between the provider and the district to determine if.
Correct, yes.
If adjustments need to be made.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not on the effectiveness of the provider.
If the space is not permitted, or if the counselor's not showing up regularly, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, it's trying to walk the line and not.
Okay.
Do the ABCs is hard sometimes.
So the district and mental health providers shall not provide gender-affirming care options or gender-affirming counseling as mandated by Idaho statute.
So that's the new one, right, that just got passed, Bill seventy-one? So are we, so I've got two points on this. Gender-affirming counseling, that wasn't included in House Bill seventy-one. It's the gender-affirming care, right, which is really medical procedures and also providing things like puberty blockers and things like that, drugs. But the counseling piece, I have a concern, because if we have a child that is struggling with gender identity, right, we're saying that they can't, or they won't be eligible for counseling?
Well, it's not that, I don't think it's the districts, I think it's against the districts, we'll have to look it up, but I think that that is against the district policy and the law itself, not without the parents' involvement, that's for sure.
Wasn't the district policy based on the employees of the district? This is a contracted mental health care provider, right?
No, it wasn't.
Are you not overstepping the boundary there between, like, because that would be between the parents and the counselor?
Right, exactly.
So you're telling them, like, it sounds, the way that you're saying it, like, you're saying that counselor cannot counsel based on gender care.
Well, the counselor and the parent can do whatever they wanna do. This is from the perspective of the district, so the district has to make sure that we stay in line with whatever the law is, with whatever our policy is, whatever, and if we need to change the wording, we need to change the wording, but we need to make sure that it's in line. We're not telling, we've never told the parent what to do with the child, what we're saying is, here's what the district will be liable for and what it will not be liable for. You know, that's, and making sure that we're also, you know, protecting the student too, that if the student feels uncomfortable or the parent feels uncomfortable, that they're not put in a position that we've already seen in other school districts, where it went ahead and happened behind the guardians, without the guardians' knowledge.
Right.
I'll say. So, there again, it's a really fine line, and we still have to remember that this is from the district's perspective, and, you know, making sure that we, you know, it's a hot topic, making sure that we stay in line with that, but we can.
So what if we, are we worried about any other laws? And so maybe we need to just.
Well, we're always worried about the law.
Correct, so maybe what we need to do is change this, because we already have a state law that says gender-affirming care can't be.
Right, well, we need to, we still need to.
But there may be other things, so maybe we broaden this and say that mental health care provider shall adhere to all federal, state, local, and district laws and district policies, or something like that.
Yeah.
And that would, that would, that would take care of this, because I believe that, that mental, you know, that counseling is not illegal.
No, nobody said it was illegal.
But this says, this says shall not, so cannot provide, so if a child is struggling with gender identity, and they're considering suicide, or they say, oh, I'm sorry, you're not eligible.
It says gender-affirming counseling as mandated by Idaho statute.
Yeah, so we need to look that up.
Counseling needs to be.
I don't, and I've read the House Bill seventy-one twice, and I don't see anywhere where it says counseling.
Right, we need the, we need the statute, let's look at the statute.
Sure.
Yeah, as long as it's in alignment with the, and nobody's ever tell a child can't have counseling when you're gonna commit suicide. That's not even what this is about. What this is about is making sure that everybody's equally covered, and that the district is protected.
Right.
Where it's not, that's the other thing, is it's a governance policy, that's all the board does. The board doesn't lay out A B C, here's how you do it. The board just says, this is the expectation of the thing.
I understand.
So do we know what that, but we need to know.
I don't think the law's been created yet, because it goes into effect July.
It's on, it's on line.
July one, yeah.
Yeah, House Bill seventy-one.
Right, but what is the statute?
Not a statute.
Oh, nineteen fifty-three, is that what it is? Yeah, try that. Fifty-three oh seven was part of it.
Nineteen fifty-three oh seven?
Yeah, was part of it. Oh, that was for fines, hold on.
Oh, principal, it's, okay.
Eighteen five oh six.
So it's Title eighteen?
Yep.
Okay.
B.
The only, in addition to this, that makes this a little bit muddy is the parents' right. Law that just passed, and it talks about the school district having to acknowledge and confirm with parents and notify parents, and so the school's not involved in this, if it's happening at school, that would be the only, we'd have to figure out.
Yeah, we need to make sure that goes at the bottom too, whatever that one is.
Do you have that number for that one?
Right now I just have House Bill, so I need to find the actual statute.
Okay.
So in the House Bill, it should, at the top of it, it should give you the beginning of the statute where they would actually put it in.
I believe there's a link to it, you can click on it.
I think it's thirty-two, one oh, ten eleven.
Is it under children and vulnerable?
Eighteen fifteen oh six starts the.
Yeah, children and adults.
So B is the.
Oh.
Part of it.
R.
Which they rewrote two, they struck two and three, and then rewrote two in there?
It is thirty-three sixty oh one.
Okay, well, we can always highlight that and come back to it.
No, this is, this isn't the detailed one, that's not right.
Three, what's that?
That one's not right. That's what was listed in the policy, but it's not right.
So it's the parents', uh, the parents' rights, the, the one they just did?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I don't have my binder with me.
Okay, so we don't get, um,
here we.
sidelined on this. I'm gonna highlight those words, we're gonna have to find the law to either support it or negate it, and we can keep moving forward. And if it's not supported, then we need to take it out, if it is supported, then we need to list.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, so a district shall, the district shall report to the board on a quarterly basis and provide the following information. Number of individuals receiving mental health services from a mental health provider in the district.
How is that known?
Will you keep track of how many students come to school?
Yeah, it's recorded.
I mean, there's some students, right, that are going to mental health care providers outside this.
This is just for the school services.
This for the schools, yeah, just so we know how many.
Do we need to clarify that?
No, it only covers the school.
It's receiving from a mental health provider in the district.
Yeah, so it's.
So it's just the services being provided here.
From a mental health.
It's like a wraparound service that the district is providing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's thirty-three six years ago.
That one's not the comprehensive one, though.
The number of students by school and grade level receiving mental health services from a mental health provider in the district.
So it makes it sound like it's only for mental health care providers that are located in the district.
Correct. It's for those that are contracted, yeah. Right.
What I do with my kids on my own time with a mental health person.
That's on the district's business.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly. A number, the number of staff, I'm sorry, what? Did you say it's not written right?
I'm worried that it's not worded right. Local mental health care provider in the district, so it makes me sound, makes it sound like we're only going to report on any local mental, or excuse me, mental health care provider in the district. So if the mental health care providers locate outside the district, but we're contracted with them, or even if we're not, we're not going to.
What main heading is this under here? You can scroll up a little bit.
So just switch it.
Under district expectations.
So you can switch services.
So move in the district.
Services, um, I just had it in my head.
The number of individuals.
Well, it's just these last couple of words right here.
Yeah.
Service providers contracted with the district.
Okay.
Right? I have to read it again, I had it in my brain, but. Yeah.
Could you not just move it? From a local mental health provider, could you just go before?
Oh, we got rid of local, but what was that?
Could you not just move it, like, instead of it being mental health provider from the district, it would be, um, the number of individuals receiving mental health, uh, services, no, I'm sorry, it was, oh, I never, I I was thinking of it in that sentence above on underage.
Oh.
So if you would put it before that, then it would make sense, but nevermind, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just reading.
That's fine, no.
Could it be referred by the district? Or through the district?
Through. Or on district grounds, basically, on district property.
Through the district.
Because I could still take my child to Heritage Health, and it would be off-premise.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, but you don't, yeah, that's not your business.
Well, they don't report on that.
So maybe we need to say.
So it's the services provided through the district, so through the district.
On district grounds, yeah. The mental health providers that come to the school district to service the kids, we need to know how many kids are actually able to utilize those services, what's, you know.
Right, so I would say through the district, on district grounds.
Right, like before, we were trying to figure out, like, do we have enough, do we not have enough?
Yes, right, yeah, I get that, I get that, it's just, we have to say through the district on grounds or something, logistics.
One thing we have to remember is, two years from now, none of us may be in this room or be reviewing this contract or this, this policy, and someone else will be, so we need to make sure that the intent.
I've got six years.
Is clear to them, right? That's all I'm getting at on some of this.
Right.
Because it, I think, we don't want confusion, we wanna make sure we convey the right message.
Oh, you don't have to tell me. We've been redoing things that haven't been touched since ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Or you could see, receiving mental health services from mental health providers on district, in district campuses?
Or through this contract, or.
Or through the district.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Because in the district makes it sound like the mental health providers are.
How does, the number of individuals receiving mental health services from a mental health provider contracted with the district? Does that leave open a loophole door that if the contracted mental health provider is somewhere else? I mean, no one's gonna report that information, but is that.
If they're somewhere else, then it doesn't matter, though, does it?
No, not at all.
But I just wanna make sure that that we're contracted with the district is sufficient, or if we need to add more words to.
No, I think that's okay.
Is that okay?
That's why. That one hasn't been updated yet, Lynn, that's why.
Okay, I was like, I can't find it.
Yeah, it's, it hasn't been updated.
But it doesn't go into effect until July first?
Correct.
But there's lots of language about notifying parents, so we would just need to be careful of that.
The number of staff receiving mental health services from a mental health provider.
Contracted, yeah, yeah.
And of course, we don't have to use, I mean, this is all beginning, you know, we can make a statement or.
Right.
So the staff isn't receiving mental health services, right, it's the children?
No.
No, I think the staff.
The staff are allowed to.
I don't believe so.
Maybe we should go reread the text.
MOU?
Yeah.
I mean, we probably could, but we don't, we have.
I didn't have any impression that they could opt until the last meeting when this came up, and I think it was agreed upon that they could, according to the text script.
Did you ever get clarity?
On.
Cause you said, you know, I don't know.
Specifically intake process.
So, wouldn't you just mark C out?
So, all I know is that when they, they came before the board and everyone was speaking, there were people that spoke about, you know, how this is a lifesaver.
That's right.
Because they got to receive services.
Yeah.
And that they didn't have to travel anywhere, they got to receive services from an adult standpoint. It wasn't their child, it was them specifically, the adult, that worked for our district.
Right.
Understanding this.
That, that, that person that spoke, or those two people that spoke, um, were actually for their children. This is, this is for the students, the Heritage Health, or in this case, is not providing mental health services to staff or the parents.
Yeah, they are.
No, to their children.
To families, they are.
No, they are, the pa- the family.
We saw the list, yeah, they are, families are on there, yeah, we had, in fact, one of them gets counseling right here at the elementary school, like, a family in the.
The family that attend with the, with the child, but it's, it's the child that's, that's getting.
No, it's family counseling through Heritage Health for the whole ha- family to, at the district, yeah, it's the whole family, it's not just the child. It's the parents, the child, everybody, and they're not the only one, we have several of them that do that.
So, in, but in the case of the staff, they're acting as a parent when they're doing that.
My understanding, we don't have any staff.
So, we're, we're gonna split out staff and parents?
Only staff that receive Heritage Health as far, as far as our benefit package, we have counseling through a separate and it's free, we get six. So, it's not, it's not connected at all to Heritage Health, so.
Um.
Where this would be through your interest.
Okay, C is very confusing.
Well, the other thing is, is that we have staff in the district whose children are not in the district.
I was just marking it out.
So, I don't know, maybe we need to clarify that, I do know that we have families that are here.
Right, but that would, they'd be covered under parents. When you say staff.
Yeah.
I think school staff are receiving, that alludes to school staffs receiving mental health services.
It's also possible that it was not specified in the MOU, but it was happening anyway, this is another possibility.
Not a bad thing, but.
Right.
Right.
They were counted on the information we were given.
Craig, how come you seem so sure that it is not a possibility?
Cause I've talked to a lot of the counselors, I've talked to Heritage Health, I've talked to administration, um, I've read the MOU. I've talked to a lot of different people within the district who are very familiar with the services provided. Um, I've done countless hours of research on this and talking with a lot of people. The staff are not going to Heritage Health on an individual basis and receiving mental health care.
Well, we took it out. Okay.
And, and you know what, a quick call to Heritage Health, would you even clarify that? I'll be more than happy to call them tomorrow.
Well, we would call the district, the district needs to, it's, we don't talk with them, we give, we talk to the district.
It's a district responsibility.
The Heritage Health doesn't report to the board, the staff, the district does.
Yes, I, I agree, but we can get information from Heritage Health, I, I'm, I can easily call Heritage Health and ask them.
Yeah, you can.
Yes, and, and I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
Um, okay, so. We've removed C, the number of families receiving mental health services from a mental health provider contracted with the district. The number of individual students' families requesting services from a mental health provider contracted with the district. And the number of individual students, staff, oops, students and family. Listed on a waiting list to receive services from a mental health provider contracted with the district.
I think we should add line in here, this says Y, and just so we clarify that, and my understanding is the Y would be so that we can evaluate, right? If we have enough counselors or licensed medical, whatever they are, right, mental health professionals, whatever those words are, um, that are, um, available. Or do we need to look elsewhere to try and find some, or do we not have, there's no real issues anymore, right? Suddenly, the mental health care crisis is gone and there's no need for this, right, to contract with them anymore. I, I think we need to, and, and maybe, that's my understanding, why we're, why we're collecting all this data. But I think it's important to put that in here, because if parents read this, they're gonna, why are they collecting all this data on, on me, my, my child, things like that?
Well, we don't get names or anything.
I understand, but the, but.
I think generally you'd wanna update, I mean, if I was on the board, I would wanna, like, I would want their, how big the different programs.
And I think all we do is we just explain why, why, why they're here.
That's what F does.
And that'll, that'll clarify, that, I think that alleviates some people that might read this and go, oh my gosh, they're collecting all this data, why do they want this?
Well, that's what F, F already says that.
You know, they're a private person. And so, I think we just, I think we just state why they, why we need the information, right?
So, you think F covers it, what the one I was just saying?
Yeah. And we're not collecting personal information, it's a.
It's more than that, isn't it?
If you scroll up.
No, that's the whole point of it, is to, um, evaluate the.
No, I'm, I'm speaking to, on F, that's just on waiting list, right, there's more information than.
Oh.
She means the F above, it's the F above, you can't see it.
At the top.
The district shall evaluate the effectiveness of its collaboration with mental health providers over six months.
And H is, goes with, these are all sub-points to point H. The reason we're doing, or what the information is, is to fulfill F, but, you know.
Yeah, and, and I think we just, I, I, I think it's, if we just clarify it, I think it'll.
But we're not collecting names, we're not collecting names or anything, we don't even know what, I, I'm trying to think, I don't even know that we even did it by, we just have like a student count.
Right. Yeah. Agreed. Agreed, I think it alleviates some people in the future that are looking at this, going, why are they collecting this information? Oh, to evaluate the services to see if they're effective or not, or, or whatever, right, do we have enough counselors?
Well, they're already collecting it, so even if we took all that out, it's all being collected anyways, they, they do that anyways, the, um, counselors.
I try to be proactive and, and cut out problems in the future, that's all.
Yeah.
No, just what I'm trying to, that's fine.
I don't know if necessity is the right word, um.
Well, you can just say something simple, the collection of the data is in order to assess that this is, um.
Even prefer to section F, right?
Oh, yeah, you could do that too.
You could say the, the collection of the data, um, is, is to help with the evaluation, as noted in.
F and H.
Whatever section F or whatever that was.
That shouldn't even be there.
Or H or S, I don't know.
Jackie, do you have a few minutes after?
Or services provided, whatever, yeah.
Do you wanna put anything in there about that personal identifying information is not provided, or it's not included?
You could just refer to your, uh, student privacy policy.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think FERPA and all of that is, yeah, they.
Well, FERPA, does FERPA go into PII as much as your student pol- privacy policy does?
And HIPAA.
Yeah, I mean, FERPA should cover it too.
I mean, we have to, how many pages are we, we're already at four pages.
I just. Right, you could just put C for, or, I mean, it could just.
Or C our student privacy policy, cause you all have PII protected in that.
Doesn't have to, yeah. But to Craig's point, the parents wanting to know, I think noting that it's a privacy issue.
Yeah, I really don't think.
Yeah, just for your sure.
I guess we could add anonymized to data, collection of anonymized data.
Or aggregated data works too.
We're gonna just say something else. C privacy policy for C, you know, for us.
Is it student privacy policies? Yeah, in fact, I was just looking at.
Do you know what number it is, I'll stop your head, I'm pulling it up right now.
I don't know, that's why I'm, I'm looking, it's.
Are you looking at it right now?
I was just gonna put a note, you can find it if you want.
Okay.
Is that what you said, Nate, the collection of aggregate data?
Uh, D was saying aggregate, I suggested anonymized, but I think D is more familiar with dealing with PII.
Okay.
Yeah, aggregated data is something everybody understands, but it's not personalized. It's just a bunch of numbers.
Thirty-two seventy-five.
And that's all we're getting.
Thirty-two seventy-five.
Perfect, thank you.
Now, the other thing that I was questioning is up here, we have district expectations and down here, we have mental health provider requirements. I didn't know if they both needed to be requirements or expectations. Um, so, under mental health, all mental health providers shall provide the district all referral requirements for services to be received. A mental health provider shall provide the district with, and we were going with something there, but we never completed it, I don't remember what it was. Um, all mental health providers shall be fingerprinted by the district for background check annually. All mental health providers shall maintain confidentiality in accordance with HIPAA and FERPA rules and regulations. All mental health providers shall require a release of information prior to sharing any individual student or family mental health information with the district. I don't remember what else, I don't remember where we were going.
Where we're gonna be.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So, we were, we're, we're looking to protect the district, right? And so, one of the things we haven't talked about is insurance. So, we should have, we should ensure that we have insurance for liability, things like that, we should ensure that the mental health provider also has adequate insurance as well. So, I, I think we need to talk about that.
Well, that should be covered in the MOU.
Which it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is with Heritage Health, but now, let's say, three years from now, we get a new, a new provider, we look at a new provider.
Wouldn't that require a new MOU?
Yes, it would.
It would.
They have to by law.
But we need to ensure that, that we have insurance and they have insurance, we don't wanna cover that in the policy.
Yeah, we can, it's redundant, but we can, because they, we, they legally have to, everybody legally has to have insurance anyways to enter into any contract with the district.
Okay.
So, I mean, but we can add it, but it's sort of a.
Okay, that's fine.
Redundant thing.
If, if that's, if we're covered, that's fine, that's all I'm bringing up is, is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's non-matic in all district contracts, that's under a dis- insured, yeah.
The coverage.
And coverage, do you all have coverage amounts?
Uh, yeah, it's on the policy and statute, we can put the statute in the bottom too.
That's a good idea.
Cause it says we have to do the fingerprinting and all that stuff.
So, one of the things that you guys asked me to follow up in with last week was specific to the intake process, so I talked to several counselors, and so. Um, if I'm a parent and I'm having some concerns, I will reach out to my local school counselor. They don't provide per se Heritage Health information, the form that Craig has. Um, they will give that flyer to the parents with all information, so they're not necessarily saying, we have this resource at Heritage Health, they give all of the resources. If in that conversation, the parent says, this is a hardship, I can't, they will say Heritage Health, it does provide this additional service. But when parents reach out to them, they give them access to all resources that are available, because Heritage Health doesn't even take all the insurances. So, it's not a, um, we're pushing one, they, they send out that flyer to any and all. If Heritage, or if the school counselor has some concerns, they will reach out to the parent, they don't, they don't call Heritage Health before having a conversation with the parent. Um, they will just say, you know, your child's having some concerns, and they'll talk through that, they'll give them that resource. So, that's kind of the point of contact, and then they will refer parents to any and all resources, and then if parents reach out to them specific to Heritage Health, they'll give them some contact information. But they don't send Heritage Health, here's the name of the kid, I want you to call this parent. It is, that document goes out to all, any parent, or if they have concerns, they will discuss it with the parent, so everything's funneled through the parent.
And there's about fourteen of them in here, and there's disclaimer on that says, this doesn't include all providers in our area, just some information to assist you.
Right. Yeah. And I talked to several just to get, is that the process for everybody? So, um, cause there are a few, we don't have MOUs with them, but there are other companies that will go in schools and provide additional services, we just don't have MOUs with them. So, there's a couple of other companies that do the same. That's what I was supposed to follow up with you, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, was there something else I was supposed to do?
You're asking me, I asked you.
I, I know, I know. So. So, from a pre- cause we talked about procedure, the procedure is they, they give them resources and then everything else is directed through the parents. But again, this is an outside entity, so insurance becomes a part, not everybody, when, sometimes we have waiting lists because we don't have either enough therapists. Um, to provide the coverage and/or there's an insurance issue, um, sometimes there's a follow-up issue, so parents may make initial contact, but then they don't follow through. So, at that point, the counselors are pretty removed unless there is a release of information from the parent, um, and that's at the request of the parent.
Does this go into the permanent file of the child?
The, the release of information would, um, but not anything else.
Okay.
So, I guess it's a full update to the Child Protection Act and Amendment, but back to the, uh, House Bill. That has not been updated yet. Along with.
Did you click on the amendment?
Um, yeah, there, what do you mean?
Um, I don't know which page, I've launched to this, but.
I went to the legislative session, so here's the existing sixteen oh one, and here's the update.
It could be, okay, cause there was one that was amended, and they showed the, the amendments and, and the.
That's this, but until, really, until it's here, I mean, and even here, there's still a disclaimer that it doesn't have to be printed, but, um, but yeah, it hasn't been updated yet, but yeah. So, we'll just reference it, knowing that we have to at least go back and, after July one, we'll have to make sure that these references are actually up to date.
Well, and we won't, if we get through this, we will take it to the board on the tenth, so we will update it, we'll send this out for parent input, and we'll come back and update it, and we'll fetch it, cause it'll be after July.
Is legal gonna look at this?
We could, that could be a recommendation that, from the team.
Might want to, they might want to do that first, right, so that way you can incorporate any of those changes, then send it out for review to the parents and such.
So, I'm gonna remove B, since we can't seem to remember what we were thinking of.
Does it have anything to do with the intake?
I really don't.
That's a good point. Right, I, I think that should be, the screening and intake should be done by the provider.
It is done by the provider.
I think we should call it out again, it's.
Well, not the screening, but the intake. The screening is done by the district to, to refer them to mental health, and then the mental health care provider would provide their own assessment and intake processes to meet whatever needs. They're going after within.
Yeah, and that's sort of a procedural thing.
There is, I, I guess I would say, my understanding, after talking to several of the counselors and just my own experience as building principal. If anybody requests access to a resource doc around counseling, it's given, so we're not really picking and choosing who gets access to it. Um, as far as, once the names have been provided, in the sense of resources, once that doc has been submitted, if parents want to pursue whatever agency, then that's up to the parents. We just give them the information, but anybody and anybody, anybody and everybody that asks for it is provided that information. So, screen, and they're don't, they're not really screening.
Well, I don't think, we have to go back to. Well, I don't think, we have to go back to our role here, too. We're just the governance. We're not gonna get into procedural. I mean, that's an admin thing. That's really not a governance thing. And that's between, you know, like the MOU, the mental health people, the staff, counselors. I think we, yeah, otherwise we could get into really long, sort of a procedural thing. And I'm sure that that's already in the admin handbook.
Well, we stayed under the district expectations. Point A and point B is that the district is providing training and education on recognizing signs of mental health concerns and procedures for its staff in regard to mental health concerns.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then just take it out.
I don't know. Do we feel like we need to add more? That it's-
Don't feel like you have to add more.
Do we need to take out? I mean, I've taken out my cross-outs for staff. So, we do need to get clarification on the gender from counseling. But I think it's just the word counseling.
Well, if we did what Craig suggested, we could send it to Amy White to just preview and see what her thoughts are, and I can ask that question.
That'd be great.
Okay. So, then my next question for you, um-
Why do you, parents write it as an education twice?
I just put that in there. Uh, I'm-
Oh, as a place marker?
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
I'm doing the eighteen, blah, blah, blah. At least get it there and then you can fix it.
So, as a point of reference, since this technically does not exist as a policy, what number would we like to attach to it? We don't, there isn't one.
Oh, it's brand new.
Yeah.
Well, no, it has to, where's it gonna sit? Is it gonna sit under?
That's what we, I mean, that's what Michelle's, so go to Board Policy, the first window. It's right there.
Well, no, I need to see the big picture. The one hundred, one thousand, two thousand, three, nothing.
They're right there.
Uh, no, go to the, or you can go to the district website.
Well, that's what I was looking for.
But they're right there. So, I would think it would go under students.
Yeah, I agree. Or facilities?
Yeah, facilities was my first thought.
See, non-instructional operations is another part.
Either, yeah. I mean, some of these could live in multiple categories.
I don't think school facilities. I think three thousand or eight thousand.
Non-instructional operations. Personnel.
What's in there? It's a list of all the files.
Well, all of the McKinney-Vento.
Some transportation, extracurriculars, safety bussing.
The McKinney-Vento and all that is in students.
Transportation for transportation.
Yeah, the McKinney-Vento and all that is in students.
Okay, so then I think it should be a student number.
Yeah.
And then there's broke out. Student protection has a health, physical screening, health and wellness.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, administry, medicine, immunizations, da-da-suicide, da-da-da, it's all under-
So, that should go with that.
Thirty-five hundred.
I don't know how to get to what I'm gonna look at.
Uh, go to S D, pull up another tab, but go to the website, go to S D two seventy-two. Yeah, there you go. Then go to the board and then there you go.
Come on.
There you go. Yeah. And then there.
So, it would be one of those.
Yeah, then it should be on the student protection.
So, one through oh-one through oh-three doesn't exist.
Oh. So, thirty-five oh-one, thirty-five oh-two?
Thirty-five oh-one works.
Okay. My next question is, um, for time purposes, if I can get this to her and she can get back to me, um, do you want me to wait and bring this back to the entire team?
Go ahead.
For feedback, or can I send it out for input?
Have we finished combining with the three? I don't think we've finished going through the other two and seeing if we want to-
Yeah, we'll have to look at those, but I just, yeah. If there's any additional language.
I thought there's some more stuff I would put in.
Okay.
Specifically about parental rights.
Yeah, I'm sorry, everyone had any of those, like parental ballroom to parental rights or-
Oh, good point. Does anybody have parental rights?
There's, uh, one of the examples has some stuff in there.
So, the Lions Club just recently came through and did ice screenings, right? Do we have a, a policy for that that we could look at? And maybe compare, I mean, there may be, maybe things in there that were missing.
When did they do ice screenings?
It's like the end of the, towards the end of the year. I don't, I saw an email from out, from the district.
It, it, they kinda hit all the schools. It's different timing. Nurse Judy sets it up.
It's under the health and the student clinicals. I'm sorry, did you put this policy under student protections? And then that one is under student screenings?
The ice screens, correct.
They're, they're all under student protections.
Gotcha.
Craig, look at thirty-five hundred. Policy thirty-five hundred. It doesn't name, but, you know, we have, uh- It talks about the opting out, but again, in this situation, it's all through parents. It's not, the school's not leading it, so.
I'll read through it.
Yeah, this one is specific to the district or that entity leading it, but it, um, I don't know if there's language that's pulled in there.
Oops.
You still have steps. Can you just say the following must be met?
There we go. And all I'm doing is writing what was down here and we can all discuss it and wordsmith it and all of that.
Just to go, you can't copy and paste.
I know.
What happens if kids don't have insurance?
Because they can't, they'll have to-
Sliding scale.
Oh, and they do have sliding scales?
Heritage Health has a sliding scale, yeah.
Yeah.
Or they may be eligible for, uh, they get square grounds and things like that. There's some other grants.
But there, there are some scenarios where they'll re, that, they can't deal with it. I mean, if they can't, so.
Oh, I know, tons of families that don't have insurance. That's why I asked.
Yeah. They try to get his, help as many families as they can.
I didn't know where it was. Thanks for, thanks for chiming in.
And the next one that's got the question, we, I worked with, that was from other parents and they recommended it's just saying, "Parent or student may discontinue service at any time."
Oh, yeah.
May what?
Discontinue.
Discontinue service.
I knew it wasn't a difficult word.
And that's already in the lease?
With the MOU?
No, just that part of the procedures of the MOU.
I like the sound of the clicking keyboard. That's what it is. Okay, so we should- All right, so prior to services being provided to a student, the following shall be met. An informational handout regarding-
Is that different from E, from what we had before? The district shall provide information to parents and guardians about mental health resources and eligibility.
I would like different information to be provided.
So, what is, what is the hazard word? Regarding services will be provided to the parent and or guardian.
So, I can hear it would be also important for the parent and guardians, not just to receive a list of the other counseling services, but also-
More information.
More information. What, like, this policy, I think, would be a good thing to provide them with.
And the whole policy?
Yeah, the policy. What are the pros and cons of this? I think providing that other counseling service, you know, the other local options is a good thing, too. Um, but just sort of further information for them.
So, maybe a packet instead of a handout?
Yeah.
In-person discussion with the parent, student, and district staff to answer questions.
I guess my concern about this one is it, you know, if it's the initial intake and there, I mean, the staff can be there to provide logistics about where it's gonna happen, but if the parent is wanting to just kind of talk through some personal stuff, the staff's not a part of that and they're not supposed to be a part of it. So, if this is about logistics, I, but otherwise, I think that the intake and in-person discussion, explain it should just be with the person and the-
Provider.
Mm-hmm. The student and the, the parent and the provider.
So, district staff should be replaced with provider or provider representative?
Or is this an in-person discussion as far as what we think needs, what the district staff thinks your child needs?
Yes.
Is that what the in-person discussion is for?
Yes, because if I got referral handout, I'm going up to school and having a very great conversation with the staff person who gave me the handout. Because what they might be exhibiting at school is not what they're exhibiting at home.
Correct.
So, you wanna get the full picture before you go talk to a provider?
I, I guess, so that handout isn't gonna go home with the child. The handout would go to a parent.
Okay, so how's it delivered?
They'll, the counselor makes contact with the parent and just says, "I have some information." So, often it's emailed. If the parent says, "Please give this to my child." But to my knowledge, we're not just handing out that flyer to a child saying, "Here, please take this to your parent," unless the parent requested it. So, I actually see the, you know, the B, two could switch with one, that you have, that's, that's all encompassing in this intake meeting, that in-person meeting. There is a handout packet given, there's a discussion. That provider is just explaining where it's all happening, that kind of a thing. That's part of that meet and greet. Of this is who the counselor is at this elementary school or at this high school. I mean, there, that's part of that intake process. Um, but I don't, a, a district staff doesn't need to be included in that. That's the, the provider providing that information. These are the kinds of things that we do. It's explaining what the program is.
But to D's point, like, if a counselor at the school knew contact with D or me, you know, whoever, and said, "Hey, we would really recommend these services," I'm gonna say one. My first step would be like, "Hey, can I come in and chat with you about it?"
Right, right.
Not, I need the counselor.
Yeah, I don't think that's specific to Heritage Health, that MO, I mean, that would be just a, that's a counseling thing. Like, I don't necessarily think that this is specific to-
But it says part of services being provided to a student.
But that's with actual services being provided. If you got a, you know, if, they, there would be a discussion and you would come in and talk to the counselor. Because it could be that the counselor, you know, is saying, "Hey, this kid's struggling out at recess. Can I talk with them?" Like, our counselors don't, I mean, they're not pulling kids without parent permission on a regular basis. True. On a regular, on a regular basis, no.
I know. I'm just saying, they do pull kids.
They may interact for sure. They're supporting, but not on a regular basis with a specific topic. They're not pulling kids without parent permission.
So, but you're sort of saying number one's gonna happen no matter what?
Right. I think that that in-person intake, yeah.
So, an in-person discussion with the parent, student, and referring district staff to address concerns regarding a need for outside services.
Yeah. I mean, and that, and all of that could be part of that intake process. I mean, it could be one is not really a one. It's an in-person meeting and then everything else is a bullet attached to that meeting, if you wanted to do it that way.
And I might remove student from that and it's parent and, and referring district, district staff. If the parent chooses then to have this, this child present.
Parent and/or student.
Yeah.
I, I guess I feel like what you're talking about is the start of anything related to this. This is more in the weeds of, we're bringing in a, you have acknowledged that you...
So we've gone through, but parents might not understand that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That, that's, that's what I'm trying to get across, is that parents are gonna see this and they're gonna be like, "Oh, you're just gonna send them out for services and I don't get to have a conversation with you all about it?"
Right. I think parents will feel better, like, "I get to go and talk to the school first. Okay, what's up?"
Yes, yes. Well, I think it can also put some boundaries in place, so that we're just not demanding that students go to Youth Acute because we think they need to go. Um, I, I think that's important. There needs to be a discussion prior to saying, "Your kid can't come back to school." So...
Is that possible? Like, is it, I guess feasible or within the right of a counselor, teacher to give the option, can't get back to school, have to get a Heritage Health counseling?
It happens.
It, it does happen, or something?
It has happened.
Okay. Well, maybe there should be something in here stating that this...
It may not be a norm, but it has happened.
Okay.
And it's not legal. We legally cannot do that because if the district requires that, if we're saying, then the district has to pay for it.
Right, and then, and those, another point I was gonna raise, which is if not all students are eligible per their, I guess, socioeconomic status and insurance.
Which is why you can require it. I mean, for, that's one reason. There's a variety of reasons why it shouldn't be required, but, right.
So do we want to add that? Make it explicit then, if that's something that we're worried about? So I guess...
You don't have to require that.
Well, it would have to be something along the lines of, um, it won't be held against the student, or there won't be, um, any penalty or...
Well, don't hang draw style that there's no penalty.
Is there?
We did put that somewhere. Oh, I think it's down here. It's in the parental rights.
Oh, it's already there.
Oh, that they can, yeah.
Okay, um...
What authorization forms are we talking about?
I don't know.
Uh, Heritage Health has different, I mean, some of that insurance paperwork, there's some intake.
Contency. All agencies have authorization forms.
That's specific to their forms, yeah. Not ours.
Yeah, so we're gonna require that? I mean, Heritage Health is gonna require that right on their end, so...
Yeah, that's why there is...
Well, parents have a right to know that their signature is required on authorization forms for their child to receive services. That the school district isn't just going to send that, them to a counselor and they're going to be seen by the counselor without the parent's consent.
We, we aren't sending them to see counselors, are we? I guess, I'm, I'm not certain I follow.
We are referring them to counselors.
Correct. That's, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
We give them a list, and then a parent contacts these providers and sets up.
Oh, is that how it works?
Well, there's several scenarios. Or if they already have a relationship, they can meet or...
But there isn't a scenario where I, as a counselor, will call Heritage Health and say, "I want you to see this kid." That doesn't happen. It funnels, all of it funnels through the parents. I mean, there will be situations where Heritage Health will call and say, "Hey, this parent contacted me, I wanna come in and if there were time, I can come in and set up a meeting." That's how the school finds out often, is they need to set up a meeting with the parent and the therapist. And so it's a, whose office am I using at that time to set up a meeting? Does that make sense?
So technically then, three, four, five, six, it's not necessarily...
Well, it's all part of their intake process.
So maybe we should just also, maybe we could put in here, the intake process for the provider will be, and then list two, three, four, five.
That's why I said you could have that as the intake and then it's, everything else is a bullet underneath because it's part of that process.
Yeah.
But are we then dictating the process that the provider will do for their intake?
Well, respectfully, this is under parents' rights. We're not telling the provider what to do. We're trying to educate and inform parents with the policy as far as what their rights are.
That's correct.
What, what knowledge they're allowed to have.
That's correct.
Prior to their child.
You could say something that may be included or something, so it's not so...
Well, and I think if the, if we're trying to protect parental rights, I think it's a reasonable request of Heritage Health to say, "We need a parental signature and the parents have to meet and approve the counselors." So I would be perfectly comfortable saying, "These are the requirements," and having them comply with those to protect parental rights.
Well, and I would say they have all these things in place, that's me.
They're in place, so we're saying that this is here, not really just inform the parents that this is a thing anyway.
Correct, yeah. Then, I mean, if you've got...
Regulatory nature.
If you've got a parent that may not understand that they have certain rights, it would be nice they, for them to be able to be like, "Oh, well, hey, where is this that I'm supposed to sign? Because this says I'm supposed to sign it." But they may not just know that they...
And most parents will.
So could it say something to the effect of "may include"?
I think we need to be cautious of must and shall.
Yeah.
For which parts of it are considered?
The above, the following shall, even.
Are you saying it's already the case?
I'm saying, I'm saying...
Is it must and a shall in the MOU?
Yeah, we're saying that insurance forms must be completed.
Well, insurance forms are...
Are you talking about insurance forms?
I'm more concerned about parental signatures.
Right, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Parents having a right to meet the counselors.
Right, so they're required on all authorization forms. So one of the authorization forms is to share information with the district. Maybe I, as a parent, don't want that. So when we put must or shall, that says has to be done.
No, you're worried, you're worried that you have to, like...
Wait, wait, just the parent request information to be shared with the district, not the other way around?
Yeah, let's be cautious about musts and shals, right? Those are very, must do this.
Well, we can change, we can write that to say...
That's, that's what I'm saying. I think, I think we need to be cautious of musts.
But it could be, what Craig is saying is it could be part of the packet, and so if you have a parent that doesn't understand, they assume they have to sign that form. They don't have to sign that form.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So I should say something along the lines of, uh...
In order for services to be started, a parental signature is required or something like that.
Well, as I, a hundred percent, they're gonna have a signature because it protects them. So there, I mean, this is a moot point in that sense, like, they have that, all of that styled in. But if you have a parent that doesn't understand that piece, there are forms that are optional forms, they don't have to sign. They don't have to give the district access, they don't have to sign over, um, some of that stuff, so...
So you could add a, like, prior to services being provided?
And Michelle has it at the very top.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, the, the provider may require...
Yeah.
An application, may require insurance to be filled out, may require certain authorization forms. And the parents do not have to meet with and approve the counselors, right? That's a, that's a choice. I mean, you and I probably would, right? Because we're, we're worried about our kid. But we're saying now that the parent has to meet and approve the counselor. We're now, we're now, we're gone beyond parental rights and we're telling parents what they have to do, right? A parent has a right to choose.
I think for that part, it was meant to sort of also protect the district, looking at from the district side, that the parent has met with this counselor and approved it, so that the district can't be held liable for providing access for some counselor to a child that then later the parent may have issued there.
May be required.
So the parent, the parent is, will say, oh, it's a correct word, has completed the intake process, basically it's contracted with Heritage Health, right? And then Heritage Health provides the district with the child's name, the date of birth, and what the schedule is to meet with. So...
We will have scenarios where parents don't come.
Yeah, in most cases.
And so then, what, what, what do you do with that? In every scenario, we have parents that will not come.
So I guess, I think maybe my concern would be, how do we know that the parent contracted, again, I'm not using probably the right word, with the provider? How do we know that? Yeah. We know, we know the provider's saying, "I, I'm meeting with Johnny Smith, his date of birth is whatever, um, on Tuesdays at 2:30 at your school." But do we know that the parent, I guess, approved that meeting, right? I would assume since, since Heritage Health is meeting and, and coming up with that, then they're a professional organization, they, they checked off the list and, and the forms and all that other stuff. Otherwise, they wouldn't, you know, they're not gonna get paid, whatever the case is.
Well, they're gonna go out of business because...
Yeah, so...
Violated law.
There you go. And it goes back to what I was saying, we need to make sure the provider follows all federal, state, local laws or, and district policies.
Uh, you put parents may meet and approve counselors, so it's not a shall.
Could you make it has the right to?
Yeah.
I think that might be more appropriate. Because may imposes no obligation, really.
And then what about the intro line to this that says, "The following shall be met"? Do we need to reword that?
You could just say something prior to services being provided to a student, um... And just put a colon right there.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's easy.
So since we changed three, unless I'm missing something, it, I don't see where it says, for, it says parental permission, permission to be revoked at the end, but where does it say that nothing is gonna happen without parental permission?
Oh, so without any negative consequences to the student and/or parent, guardian?
So maybe just at the end line, we could just add that, say like, "Services won't be started until parental permission is..."
Provided.
Obtained, or yeah, whatever, and then...
Written parent permission.
Yeah, something like that.
Do you feel like you need, if you have that, you need the next line, "Parents shouldn't make us continue services at any time"? Do you feel like those are one of the things?
Well...
The student part's new.
No, I think they're different.
Yeah.
Because the parental permission is...
Yeah, and then...
Being revoked.
Okay, but this could be problematic because I'm nine years old and I say I don't wanna see the counselor, but my parent is requiring me.
Yeah. Right.
It's like anything, we go with the parent, not the kid.
But also, but we have those instances that we've dealt with where we have students who are eighteen still in school.
A hundred percent. And then, but, then if it's an eighteen-year-old, the parent doesn't get access to any of the paperwork now. I mean, we can't even communicate without releasing records. So I would be concerned about putting a student can because if it, I mean, it's in opposition to the parent.
Yeah, that's fine, but we have to somehow cover those that are eighteen that don't even...
Right, mm-hmm. We could put something, um, because the moment you're eighteen, you are an adult and you get to make that decision for yourself.
You know, unless... Yeah.
And then start putting the MOU.
Mm-hmm. But we do have situations where a student wants something and so then you would just be encouraged to talk to the parent, but ultimately it's up to the parents. Because you're not gonna say the parent or guardian then? Parents not...
Is that what turning eighteen is referred to, age of majority?
Mm-hmm.
It is. Jacqueline, do you wanna put something in there about if a child expresses something that it's communicated back to the parent? I just, I don't wanna put something that a child could discontinue because if it's in opposition to the parent, that could be problematic.
Yeah, and if... I think there should, because...
Yeah.
Counseling doesn't work if one party doesn't like the other party.
I don't know. Hundred percent.
So what are they expressing?
A desire to discontinue services.
Yeah, a desire to leave the kids, okay.
Yeah. So you're not saying desire requires, can you just say the request shall be discontinued after parents? The request, or the concern, or the expression, or the statement, or, I can go off of some of them for days. Also thinking of this.
Shall be communicated to the parent or legal guardian.
That was funny, people, you were supposed to...
Post haste.
We don't wanna put a timeframe on that?
That I, I was going to write post haste, but I...
Yeah, post haste is a great term.
How's it handled when there's, maybe prior to the next session or something like that?
A lot of stuff we do, it's within twenty-four or forty-eight hours.
I was gonna say, I would go with what the standard is. Forty-eight hours. Google will do it for you, so, sometimes.
Do you wanna put in here by the, um, provider? Because the school district would have no idea that that request was made. I mean, it could, but if a student may, expressed it to the...
Well, the counselor should be checking in with the parent. I mean, if that's where all this is at.
Right, yeah.
Which I would assume that they are... Now, I do imagine that in many circumstances, the child's gonna come home and say, "I don't like this person I'm talking to."
That is true, yeah.
Well, and if they have a safe person at school, they'll express it to that person as well, but...
Yeah, too. Yeah.
But I, like, so let's just say, um, I had a student that said it to me. I mean, I could call the parent and just say, "Hey, your child expressed this to me," but I have no context of how it was said or what. So I would then ask the provider, "Can you please contact the parent?" Because there would be limited, I would have limited answers and context.
So this is gonna wanna be part of the school or district protocols?
Probably be aware of it. I think it already says in there that they'll follow all of our...
I guess when you're that bottom, what are you referring to, like additional, beyond counseling?
I don't know.
There could be, um...
I was writing...
Prescribed meds, maybe?
Yeah, we can't do that at school.
The, the provider can't do that at school? Really?
We had it removed from the MOU.
Oh, no, not at school.
Last year, but we never got a modified MOU.
Yeah.
Because that's too much of a liability for the district.
No, I like it. Okay, um, Jackie, do you have...
Maybe services beyond counseling, is that what the question is?
Yeah, do you have any thoughts on that? Beyond meds?
Like referral for a hospitalization or something?
Oh, like a hold?
So the asking like that. I mean, I know, I'm not a mental health professional, so I'm sure that there are times when it's like, like the mandated, you know?
I mean, there, yeah, I mean, there's, there's some that are out of your control, but I would imagine that the provider calls the parent to discuss.
I hope so. But I don't, I mean, I was writing.
I feel like that's beyond the scope of school, I guess.
What's that one?
To me, that's beyond the scope of school, like, from a school standpoint, you know what I mean? But I guess if those conversations happen...
They might not be aware that they can get a second opinion.
Right, yeah.
So it's just making sure parents understand their rights fully.
So do you feel like we're in a good spot here?
I think I would like, I would like there to be an additional parental consent form if the counselor wants to discuss anything covered in the... I think I would like, I would like there to be an additional parental consent form if the counselor wants to discuss anything covered in the controversial topics policy. Like, there's a possible scenario here where my.
Wouldn't they fill out our controversial form?
Do we have a controversial form?
The.
Yeah, I guess we do.
Yeah.
We made one.
Oh, but that's for people that come and speak within the classroom.
No, it was, we, we made it broad, remember, we removed.
Yeah, it was for controversial.
We, uh, okay, I think we removed the majority of that language because we were worried, everybody was saying books, shows, somebody talking, like the controversial.
Remember, we did once, like, there was one specific to sex ed and then there was one, so I mean, that, that's, I mean, you could put something in there that district policies are followed or, and that would incorporate both of those.
Yeah, that makes sense, uh, don't we already have that? I'm actually surprised.
Yeah, we do have a form for that.
Yeah, but didn't we note in here that the mental health providers are required to follow the district policies?
That's what I'm saying, we could add that in there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, it's in this one. So it's a.
Local laws and district policies.
Right, yeah, I think that's a standard that you should, but I actually think it says that in the MOU too.
Yeah.
Counselor staff must be provided, oh no.
It does.
Yeah, I think it says that they have to follow our policies in the MOU.
I think that might reassure parents to see it, and parents, parents aren't gonna read that.
Yeah, that is true, I think, I think it would still be good to have that purely for parent informational purposes, like.
Yeah.
Like, as a parent, you know, I would be worried, I saw my kid in there, cause he said his buddy died and they end up talking about some controversial sex thing or whatever.
Right.
Boy, stranger things than that, right?
Yes, well, he only has fourteen days to be sad.
Yeah, so we have, um.
Cause after fourteen days, it's a diagnosis.
So we have twenty-three forty, which is controversial issues, we have twenty-three forty F is parent, parent opt-in for sex ed.
It's true. Fourteen days.
We have twenty-three forty-five, which is for speakers, and then we have twenty-three forty-five, which is a parent opt-in for controversial issues and then a procedure for speakers.
So we already have a parent opt-in for controversial issues, then we could just add this.
So we were very.
What is that one, like?
Twenty-three forty.
Yeah, and we do have a.
Twenty-three forty-five F.
And what is its name?
Parental option form for controversial issues.
So, the form, is that going under mental health provider requirements?
You mean that can't, they must, um, adhere to all LJSD school policies?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Ooh, okay, I thought we were doing the form, okay, so.
But you could note the form at the very bottom where we list policies.
Yeah.
I think Roma is doing that right now.
Yep, yeah. In fact, it says provided with copies or links to the required.
Cause that could be part of that packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So anything else we would need to add to this?
So it still doesn't specifically call out that the parent would have to sign that document in order for those topics to be discussed by one of the contracted mental health professionals.
But I think, just to cover the district, like Craig was saying earlier, just for liability purposes, I think that they, the district should have something on file, whether they choose to do, not do, whatever, that says, yep, I'm aware of, you know.
From the parent?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
I'm aware of what?
Every, I, everything.
That, that, that the parent has, again, using the wrong word, contracted with the provider.
Provided. So then, do you wanna put under there that, um, signed copies of parental consent has been provided to the district?
Yeah, I think something, so we don't end up with the other one where the parent comes back and says, oh, well, you know.
Right.
Yeah, as long as there's no additional personal information on that form, which I don't know what that form looks like, that really the district has no business seeing.
Right. Yeah, it's just.
So I think, I think we need to be cautious of that as well.
Yeah, it's just a.
I don't know what their form looks like.
Yeah.
Um, uh, it's, basically it would be an acknowledgement, just a, do we have just like a generic acknowledgement, maybe we just need to make one.
I know, we could, that would be hard.
Yeah, just a generic, um, you know, I received and understand that.
Like you do for the movies?
Yeah, just a, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so you could copy like the movie and book one, just change the language.
I mean, from a procedural standpoint, I feel like I'm hearing you guys tell me is, um, we could have a, I acknowledge that, like, it's like a syllabus or a, you know.
Yeah, like, like.
Um, I acknowledge that I've received this and that would include the resource doc, I feel like I'm hearing Craig say, um, not Craig, Nate say, the controversial issue.
There should also be an opt-in for counseling without having signed that form as well.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think it would be a form to say, I sign up, I don't sign up, it's just that I'm, I'm aware, I've been made aware of this policy and it's.
For me, I think that it's at the point where you are requesting heritage help, like, if I'm a parent and I'm asking for counseling services, I'm gonna be given that resource.
You know, references.
If I then follow up and say, now I wanna have, I wanna meet with a heritage health counselor, cause I wanna it to happen during school hours, then part of that intake process is the resource doc, the controversial issues. I think the sex ed one, just because you could be talking about something, um, it could be this policy.
This policy.
It could be.
Um, and then there's just a little, like, just like if it was a syllabus, like, you just sign that I've acknowledged that I've received this, and then, then we have a, then the district is provided. Once the mo, the parent has signed this and then is pursuing, like, it could be acknowledging that services will be rendered, um, declining services, like, there could be an additional follow-up. So that we have on record, the parent is, you know what I mean, that wouldn't be hard to do, I could put together, have, um.
Yeah, um, just, just like we have to do now when you go to any healthcare provider, it's like, yep, I got that, uh, privacy, you know, HIPAA.
Right.
Oh, all the privacy.
At least you provide FERPA and NISA.
You're just acknowledging that you've been made aware of these things.
Yeah.
From the district's perspective, so that we don't.
Yeah.
It covers you.
Yeah.
And, I mean, yeah, that wouldn't be hard to do, and so that just covers everybody and then it's acknowledgement, and then, I mean, it would be really easy, once, to Craig's point, if we, I don't know what's on that heritage health form when they're acknowledging services. So on this packet, there could be, uh, once they've made that decision, they could come back and sign that, that services are being rendered through the district with heritage health, and then they just mark it and sign it and call it good, and so we're not getting any personal information.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The initial one is an acknowledgement, then there could be another caveat to services will be provided, services, I'm declining services, and if that's it, it's that simple, so that we're not.
Right, and then, because then heritage health follows up with the child's name, date of birth, and when they're meeting with them.
Crossing that line. With their stuff, yeah.
Exactly, to us, so to the district, and then we know, okay, the parent has, we've, we've got this form here, the parent signed said, yes, they're.
Correct. Right. Right, right, cause the other thing that we haven't talked about, but we do this, is part of our process is we make sure that they understand what a fire drill looks like, what the lockdown drill is, because if they're in the building, they need to know all the safety protocols, and so that's the other procedure.
We're the other provider.
I mean, then maybe we put that at the district and that all safety protocols are.
Yeah, I think that's in, that's in the MOU as well.
That's in the MOU, right, yeah. Oh, it's in this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But because they are, you know, they are in the building, so we need, we have to know for safety purposes where they are and, um, they have to know the procedures. So.
Yeah, so is your provider want to, all, all, uh, LJSD safety, safety procedures are followed by professionals and staff on site, including but not limited to.
Right. Yep, so we just go over that when they, you know, it's the same as guest teachers, we go over that with them as well.
Emergency lockdown procedures, sign in, sign out procedures, all that, this, yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Michelle, on that one, mental health provider part B, um, that, would you wanna add, and the results provided to the board on a certain basis? I sort of remember us talking about that last week, but.
Maybe that was the B that was left open.
But maybe.
Maybe it was.
But maybe.
So.
Do we do that for the others?
But if we fingerprint, don't, doesn't this district get the results?
Does that mean the board gets it? I don't know how it all works.
I don't know, cause the board doesn't need the finger, okay, all right, they just, it goes through the district, yeah.
The board never sees any background checks, yeah. And I don't think we have a policy that requires that it be reported to the board, no.
Under, uh, district, was it district expectations, I don't remember what it's called, that section, do we need to put in there that we are providing space? For the provider to work?
Isn't that just for, uh, something or a, a given?
Okay, that's, that's kind of the whole gist of the.
Oops. I could say it, but I would think that that would just be, uh, I can't think of the word I'm looking for.
Assumed.
Yeah, but that's not the word I wanted, but, uh.
I mean it.
A given.
Uh, well, yeah, that too, but, uh, a by right, uh, like a by right, but that's not it, that's close, anyways, whatever.
We're gonna play a send and then game, but I can't.
Yeah.
You could put it in that first paragraph, at the top.
Right, training and education.
Cause this is, I mean, cause with respect to the district's expectations.
No, that's why I'm saying, it could go into the statement at the top, because you talk about how you're contracting with a local mental health provider to facilitate services, you could say on campus.
The statement.
If you guys, I don't know, I don't know if we use the term campuses.
Or onsite.
Or onsite, yeah, I don't know what you all use, every school district.
Can we scroll back down to the parental rights part, if we're done with that? Parental rights, is that what you said? Yeah. Okay. But can we, on part two, how would we feel about specifying what is gonna be included in that informational handout?
Yeah, like, hey, like.
What I just put.
Yeah, what I just put.
That's fine.
What's that?
I can, I can hand this document to you and we call it good, I have ideas.
Uh, Craig, the paper that you have in front of you, what's the title on there, instead of just calling it a resource doc?
Community resources.
Okay.
Community purposes, hotlines and things like that, I don't know, the last meeting we brought up, so, if you're interested.
Document?
He said that controversial issue, policy and, uh, form, but you can't do the form without the policy, doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't.
Uh, the, it's not called sex ed though, um.
Probably a policy, policy number.
I'll tell you right now.
Two, three, four, five.
Uh, it's twenty-three forty-five?
Yeah.
Wait, that's, yeah, and then the, um.
It's like, well, I'm a child. Um, the.
Twenty-three forty.
Yeah, parental option form for sex education.
I think we should make it clear that those forms do not have to be signed by parents.
Okay, the other thing we talked about is this policy, so policy, what do we call this one?
Thirty-five oh one, I don't know, thirty-five oh one, yeah.
And then we said, uh, FERPA and HIPAA.
Wait, all information, text, yeah, that's right. Is it for a policy or that?
We get to.
I'll just say policy.
Acknowledgement of receipt of these documents.
It's actually because it's a, it's just FERPA, it's Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, so it's not that like.
Yeah, I'll roll.
It's Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Oh, it's spelled out?
I'm going to.
Oh.
Okay, here, we'll just go first.
Oh, cause people don't know what FERPA are, you're right.
Family Education.
Educational Rights.
Educational Rights.
And Privacy Act. And then, um, acknowledgement.
GRIB or HIPAA, it's health. Is it information?
And it's health, insurance.
Insurance.
Portability and Accountability Act, PORT.
PORT. Portability.
And Accountability Act. We could've, we could've said HIPAA Act and FERPA Act.
Oh.
What's a bad act, man?
Yeah.
Is there two As on HIPAA?
Yes, there's not two Ps, I always get it wrong.
And then acknowledgement of receipt of forms, if you have them signed.
They wanna put, to be returned to district or something like that, right, just so that's where.
Yeah.
Well, that'll be on the form, I would think.
What about the student privacy policy?
They don't have to sign it.
Okay, nevermind.
Except up here, we're saying that the mental health providers need to provide the district with signed copies of parental consent prior to the beginning of services.
Oh, there you go.
So whether they sign the acknowledgement that they receive the information or not is irrelevant, as long as they're signing a consent.
Something that's acknowledging.
Saying, I am fully aware, I've gotten my stuff and I'm good to go.
Is that not two separate things?
I think, I feel it's two separate things, Jackie.
I'm, I'm giving them, the district is giving them a packet of information, we wanna make sure the parent.
It's about protecting the parent's rights.
I, I receive this packet of information from the district, that protects the district.
And I'm just, so.
So like, when you go into healthcare providers, they're not really forthcoming with all this stuff or something.
That was awful, I know.
So this is about really being a partner with the parents and saying, hey, we're making sure that you understand your rights, because the provider might do a really bad job of doing that, which they do.
Acknowledgement of receipt of forms, okay.
All right, I'm gonna keep beating this down, let's, can we go back to the, where I mentioned this twenty-three forty-five? All right, can we make it clear, I'm gonna keep pushing there?
Oh, you mean that they don't have to sign these?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It's a good horse to beat, it's okay.
Thank you. It might be dead, still be dead.
What is, what was that statement we just wrote? There you go, mental, shall provide the district with signed copies of parental consent and acknowledgement or receipt of forms from the district prior to the beginning of service. So I understood that, that packet of forms was, we were, the district was handing that to the parents.
So is the district walking the parents through the forms and all of that?
Right. So we're gonna hand them the policy, we're gonna hand the parents the policy of that, so I don't think the provider is going to provide us acknowledgement or receipt of those forms. That's something that, that we would, we'd say, here's these forms, please acknowledge here on this thing that you have received these, right?
So it's the district shall be provided with and not specify?
There we go.
She took it out, I know. Okay, separate.
Yeah. That way the parent can't come back later, right, and say, I need the two bills.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the one above that, since that one was, or, were you finished with that yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so the one back up there that were highlighted, that could actually become two points until we figure it out, maybe stay two points, the yellow right there? That the gender affirming counseling, I mean, if the parent, I guess if the parent, you know, is okay or whatever, I just wanna make sure.
That's why I'm saying that should be another pick up and set for, is gender affirming counseling included in policy, in the controversial topics policy?
No.
Okay, I feel like.
Because we've always sort of.
We said we can't do it.
Right.
Right.
Staff can't do it.
Right.
And it's in the, isn't it in the gender policy?
Gender identity policy, yeah, yeah. So, does that extend to heritage health not being able to do it? No, see, I don't think so.
No.
So, this is why I want there to be another parental consent form that is signed by parents?
Well, they have to follow the, it's beginning July one, they have to follow Idaho law.
Right, yeah, so there's.
Right, but the, the argument here was that Idaho law does not cover gender-affirming counseling, I think that's the argument Craig was making.
Correct.
So if that's the case, as a parent, I would like to have to consent to gender-affirming counseling being given prior to being given.
Yes. Right. Right, that's what I'm saying with this, they actually become two line items.
But, I guess.
That's getting into the weeds, district wise.
Well, we put in there that you can't, you have to follow, uh, all the policy, and we have a policy that says that that can't happen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but Ramona was saying that heritage health is not bound by that policy, and I don't believe that they themselves would believe themselves to be bound by that policy.
It says they're gonna follow it, but when you get into this, that, that's what I'm saying, it's such a, I don't.
That's why I thought we were gonna have Amy White chime in specific to, because that law hasn't, we don't have it, and the interpretation of that, I would.
Oh, I'm sure that.
Yeah, well, it's not the law, I don't wanna end up with the, that, that particular one, I don't wanna end up like the other districts is what I'm trying to.
Right.
So that the district can be removed out of that, and it's like, look, it, that's between the parent and the counselor, the district doesn't have a liability.
Right. I mean, that's what Craig is saying, that's what Craig is saying.
I, I agree.
And that's what I'm trying to say here, is that, all right, the law's covered under G, we get that, but that this other one, I mean.
Well, you could, if, if, if her guidance is that, I would just like to ask that question, and then we could just tweak our, any of our forms, our controversial, and then put that, that a gen, and then parents can say, okay, cause the issue is, is, or, or we just put in there that there would be a form that's signed prior to that happening, because, um.
But, I mean, that's what I'm advocating for, is that.
I feel like they'd have to get, that they'd have to get permission from the parent.
Well, that's what I'm advocating, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, 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 exactly. And the other thing, which I'm gonna add at the bottom of this, is the, um, people, I, I didn't have time to look over my whole reference list, but the protection of people's rights and amendment is above and beyond even the parents, so the kids have the right also, like you were talking earlier, but the kids do have a right, under federal law, to not engage in that treatment, counseling, any of it, they don't have to.
My concern is if that, if everything in that bill comes to pass, and the language is that there is requirements about parents being notified, and so, how do we, that's the piece where there can't be private conversations happening at school, through heritage health, without the parents being aware of it.
Yeah. Right, exactly.
And that's what I think we're all trying to cover, so that's what I want Amy to, White to chime in to, which.
Goes along with the.
What's that guidance, is it a form, is it, what does that look like?
Right. Right, yeah.
Cause sometimes there's conflicting statute, like it.
So can we get Amy White to look it over and then come back to this next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we are, we're five minutes till time, so are you guys good with that? Is I will take this back to, um, send it out, um, sometimes she's super responsive and, but we meet next week, so for sure, within the next week, and then we can wrap this up and.
Um, my only other, you know, was on the list of the things that we're providing in that information packet, to also put in a list of pros and cons, similar to when you go to a doctor and they tell you the benefits and risks of a surgery or treatment or whatever, um, same thing, I think there are parents who might not be aware of all the pros and cons, like, oh, if my kid, other kids might know my kid is getting counseling at school, is he gonna be at risk of being bullied, or, you know, things like that too.
I mean, I gue, I guess, yeah, we can, my concern with that is it's subjective, so what's that list? Like, you know what I mean?
That it's subjective on both sides, then hopefully it provides a sort of balanced overview.
Right. 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 But that's the, that, I mean, a pros and cons list could be really subjective to the group of people that show up to put it on that list, that's my only thing.
That's very specifically subjective, because it's an opinion on both sides, it's like, this is the good thing and this is the bad.
Which is Jack's one, point, but that's my only.
Right.
We can revisit that next Wednesday as well.
I agree.
What?
We can revisit that next Wednesday as well, since.
Yeah, okay. Well, and we can try to make it as objective as possible, you know? Okay, are we good, you guys, to wrap this up, and I will send this to Amy, and then we'll go from there, um.
We don't have all of our references and stuff, just so she knows that this is a really rough draft, okay, um, cause I don't want her to charge us to, uh, you know, to like, give us all the legal and all, you know, references and all that.
All, all, I'm just gonna ask her specific to the gender-affirming part, and just say with the new House Bill coming out, what, what are the.
Okay, yeah. And the parental rights act that they're updating, I think I got most of the reference, but they haven't.
Right. Right.
Put it all out there.
Cause it just feels like it could be conflicting, there's some requirement in the health district, so, is everybody good with that?
Right.
Yeah, we made a lot of significant changes tonight, how do we get the latest copy of this?
I can print it for you, um, I can email it out to you.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
Does everybody wanna an email list?
Yeah, I think you know.
I don't know that I have everybody, so if you want me to email it to you, will you send it out to me, just write your email right here? Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for coming.